I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May 11th, 2016. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move... I move the board enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining are legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, numbers 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
See, see them.
I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May 11th, 2016. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item is approval of the agenda.
I move approval of... Sorry. I move approval of the agenda with resumption of the previous executive session following the end of the regular session.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Board reports. Rita, you get to go first.
I do. As you see, they're moving me on down this way. That's because Dan wasn't behaving, so we had to put him in between us, so. I went to the Newtown Players. I saw a few good men. It was a fantastic show. We had featuring our own Dr. Marr. Also Captain Randall played a part. We had some students playing a part. And the Great Mills High School Junior ROTC did the opening performance of...with some of their drills and things like that. It was wonderful. It was great to see the partnership with the schools and the performance. And, you know, hopefully that...even though the show is done, you can still support the Newtown Players by, you know, some more of these shows. Just Google on the web. And like I said, a lot of our staff and students are active members with this organization. So that's it.
Mr. Carney?
Thank you. I attended a couple of Board of County Commissioner budget hearings, and I'd like to thank the superintendent and his staff for all the work they did to put forth the budget. And then I also attended the first responders' recognition yesterday. It was a very moving ceremony, and I thought that it was very nice that the community would honor these people because they do give of their time and certainly sacrifice. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, in addition to the round of budget work sessions, I went to Margaret Brent Middle School held a dodgeball tournament as a fundraiser, and it was put together by, I believe, the Language Arts Department. And they do this several, you know, like, this is an ongoing thing. So there were 18 student teams that participated, and they actually had members from Team USA Dodgeball, who were the officials. And they won the gold medal last year at the Dodgeball World Championships. So we had 18 teams, a group of seventh graders, and, I mean, the kids had, you know, they all had themes, and they all had names for their teams. So the team that won was Team Goat, which stood for Greatest of All Time, a group of seventh graders that were decked out in red, white, and blue, a lot of flag things. So they survived the double elimination tournament, and then they also beat the student...or the teachers and staff to become the dodgeball champions for Margaret Brent. So Mrs. Fowler did tell me that, you know, they did raise a lot of money. The PTA provided concessions, which also all goes back to contribute to school. And I believe they have finally outgrown the Margaret Brent gem, and next year they will have to possibly move it, possibly to another area high school because it truly was standing remotely. So it was a very good time, and congrats to everyone. And also, you know, there's a lot of work that went, and a lot of teachers that stayed after, you know, to get everyone involved, and they...all the kids wore their costumes on the day of the tournament and everything, so it was...it was a lot of fun, so.
Sounds like a lot of fun. I remember dodgeball. I attended Chopticon High School National Academy of Finance Financial Literacy Night. Mrs. Allen and I attended that event, and it gave the students an opportunity to show their projects. And the program also gave the students an opportunity for internships, to earn college credit, and to qualify for scholarships, college scholarships, and to gain valuable work experience. And the displays were arranged in the cafeteria, took the whole cafeteria, and here are some of the projects that the students did. These were just the handouts that were at the table. Our students know about buying a car. Whether you want to buy a new car, a used car, or leasing a car, it tells you all you need to know. That was a good one. Credit cards versus debit cards. The risk of credit cards, debit cards, and the type of cards. They talked about buying or renting. Do you want to buy a house? And the pros and cons of buying, steps to renting a home, and the pros and cons of renting. And important questions you should consider before you buy a house. So this is another good one. So our students there are very financially literate. Identity theft. What is it? How do people get away with identity theft? What happens when people get caught? Signs of identity theft? How to prevent it? This was another great one. Also, some of them repeated themselves. This one's on credit cards, pros and cons, and debit cards. So they gave different perspectives. And retirement planning. Our students are thinking about that. Questions you should ask. I mean, really, they're very smart students. They're looking ahead at the future. They know that day is coming, and that is a reality for all of us if we are so blessed to live that long. So they talk about common questions about retirement. What do you do if you have to spend your retirement money in advance? Where can you find help or information about retirement? How will not planning for the future affect your family? And now that I stop working, will my taxes be lowered? And ways to plan. So they say retirement is just ahead, even for our high school students. Savings, financial savings, saving tips, and why isn't it important to save money? This was provided. This is another one on identity theft. Buying or renting? Auto insurance? Students need to know about that. How to shop for it? Locations and rules? Who needs auto insurance? And auto insurance rates? Starting a business? A lot of young students start businesses. What does it require? Money, time, patience, research, and a business plan. And they have 20 questions to ask yourself if you want to start a business. The positive aspects and the negative aspects of starting a business. Those are just a few of the projects that were displayed there at Chopticon High School. That is one of our career pathways, which is an excellent program, and they are connected with the Future Business Leaders of America. I want to thank Ms. Baden, the National Academy of Finance Coordinating Teacher, and Mrs. Burr, the NAOF, which is the National Academy of Finance School Coordinator. It's an excellent program. Students can apply for the program.
Absolutely.
Is it still open?
Oh, of course it is.
It's still open to take applications for students who are interested in the National Academy of Finance, and it is accredited and certified. Thank you very much.
I think out of the projects that we saw, one of my favorites was what them projecting...the students projecting what they would be doing at age 25 and then at 65, and the, you know, being down to the type of car they were going to have, and how much it was going to cost, and homes, et cetera. It was...I'd love to, you know, fast forward and follow up and find out how that...how that all works out for them. But they were very detailed. As Mr. Carney said, we have spent a fair amount of time at Commissioner Budget Work Sessions over the last couple of weeks, and I echo his comments about the work of staff. I'd also like to thank the folks from ISMAC and SESMIC, who were front and center throughout, and very respectful, many conversations with commissioners. There was a lot of work going on to try to bring us forward, and I just thank everyone who was there. And for those who went to the town hall meeting last week and spoke or were present as well, so please take back my thanks, and I think probably echoed by the entire board. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I've learned a lot in the last two weeks. I continue my learning, and some lessons are more forcefully taught than others, but it's a process. I will tell you, I am once again just incredibly impressed by the...all the people who work on behalf of children in St. Mary's County Public Schools. It's, you know, we have just the most fantastic people dedicated to children and learning and to the greater community. We are really an exemplary school system, and that's demonstrated by our people. And we're going to be recognizing and talking about some exemplary people later today. I will tell you that I had some highlights, really, some really great things. So up in Ocean City for SESM, and there was a lot of real talk about technology and innovation and the future of educating children, and it was really quite inspirational. I came back, and on Friday I was over at Leonardtown Elementary School where they do...every other week they do Choice Day, where the kids have time framed in their day so they can do things of great interest to them, everything from puzzles to poetry to theater to music to just everything. And it's great to see really gifted teachers and support staff working with engaged and enthusiastic kids. And last night, I ended my day, a longer day, but I ended my day so positively with the Patuxent Partnership Annual Recognition and Reward...and Dinner that they host. And Rear Admiral Matt Winter, who is the Chief of Naval Research, finished the evening with a fantastic speech about what makes St. Mary's County and the Office of Naval Research in Patuxent River so fantastic, like what makes this county, why we're growing, why we are such a place where people come to the county because...and of course, he says it's the S and T and the O and R, and so I have to go, what's the S and T? Science and Technology. Science, Technology, and the Office of Naval Research. And after we left, I was with Dr. Marr and Mrs. Montgomery, and we were just talking about all of these incredible scientific breakthroughs and investment in research that's going on in this community. And, you know, by the time I got home, I'm once again, I'm buoyed. I'm so proud of being here in this county, working with such wonderful people on behalf of kids. There is no greater place to live than St. Mary's County. So we're going to have a really positive and wonderful end of this year, and I can't wait to recognize some staff in just a few minutes. So it's all good, and we have each other.
Just roll right into...
So let's just move right into it.
Roll right into teacher appreciation?
I think we should move right into teacher appreciation. I want to hear from our director, Dale Farrell.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So today I'm here, and Mr. Smith kind of stole my thunder, talking about all the wonderful people we have.
Setting the stage.
Setting the stage, thank you. So not only am I going to talk a little bit about Teacher Appreciation Week, and a lot of you saw activities that were happening in our schools last week, but we also have some individuals in the audience that we really want to recognize that have been nominated by their peers to represent the school system. So first of all, let's talk about a little bit about Teacher Appreciation Week. So if you were out in the schools last week, you probably saw some things that were going on that kind of made you question, what the heck is that? And these are just a few examples of all the activities that happened at the different schools. So at Evergreen Elementary School, each teacher was given a supplies cake. So I thought it was a real cake where they got to cut it. But that's because I always like to eat, so. But it has all different kinds of supplies in it for the teachers to use in their classrooms. At Greenview Knowles Elementary School, they had goodies for the greatest, and that was for their entire staff. Hollywood Elementary was very active on the Twitter sphere. Jennifer Gilman was tweeting out positive messages about her staff all week long. Pony Point also picked up the Twitter feeds and were providing positive tweets to their staff. At the middle school, Leonardtown Middle School had ice cream sundaes and root beer floats, and that's the first picture you see up there, with lots of goodies. I see whipped cream, I see some cherries. Margaret Brent had a whole week of honoring their stars, their movie stars, and these are all little positive things about each of their teachers in their building, and they were posted around the building. And then Spring Ridge Middle School had catered lunch for their staff, and this day it was from Firehouse Subs. And I thought it was neat that it says, thanks for letting our crew feed yours. I think that's really cool. At Great Mills High School, the students decorated the outside of the school with chop for all of their staff members, thanking them for all of their hard work. So a lot of schools will be actually celebrating Teacher Appreciation Month, kind of like I celebrate my birthday, the whole month. So they're going to be doing activities throughout the month. Some of the businesses actually picked up Teacher Appreciation Week, and Chipotle gave all teachers a buy-one-get-one deal if they had their ID with them. Chick-fil-A gave out free sandwiches, and IHOP had free entrees for educators. So we thank our businesses that support our teachers, too. But now I'd like to thank and recognize a couple of people. So first of all, Ellen Johnson is our Educational Support Professional of the Year Award Winner, representing the entire school system, and we have a little video.
I truly don't believe I could have picked a better person for the SBO Award. Ellen Johnson is just dedicated to the staff members here at Mowgli Street, but not only that, but she spends a tremendous amount of her time working with the schools. And her dedication doesn't end there. It goes out to the community. If you spend any time at all talking to Ellen, you'll find out about the multiple projects that she's helped with, and the many people that she goes into the community and assists. And one of the things that impressed me at Christmas time, when we're all getting up and spending time with our family, Ellen is at a kitchen at 6:30 in the morning cooking for people in the community who are less fortunate than we are. She's just a very wonderful person. She's very dedicated to her job and to the community, and I just want to say I feel very fortunate to have known her, and I want to thank her for mentoring me when I first came to Mowgli Street to work at HR. She has been a wonderful friend and a tremendous asset to me. Thank you, Ellen Johnson.
This SB means a lot to me because it's totally unexpected when they nominated me for the Person at Mowgli Street. Like, and the day that I was notified that I was the SB winner for all of St. Mary's County Public Schools, I didn't know whether I should cry, or I just was totally shocked, but I really appreciate the fact that everybody feels that I'm so deserving of this award. I'd like to also say that I've always been told by my mom to treat people like I want to be treated, and she says, you know, you should help everyone, and that's exactly what I try to do every day. I'd like to thank Sam about that. I would never ever have started to work for St. Mary's County Public Schools. I need to thank all my friends at Mowgli Street for nominating me for the SB Person of the Year. I really appreciate it, and I'm glad that they consider me someone that deserves this award.
Thanks. So with that, I'm going to ask Ellen to come up because she has a few words for the board.
I want to thank everybody again. I've tried to do speech after speech after speech. So the best thing I thought I could do is just tell you how I feel from my heart. I want to thank the people again here at Mowgli Street for nominating me as their person, their Educational Support Professional, because if they hadn't nominated me, I wouldn't have become the Educational Support Professional of the Year for St. Mary's County Public Schools. I want to say thanks to everybody. It's been such an honor. I've always been taught to treat people with respect and kindness. So whenever somebody calls me, I try to help them with every skill I have, and if I don't know how to help them, I know a phone number of a person or someone else that can get the help that they needed, and I relay that information back to them. St. Mary's County Public Schools has taught me so much. When I first came here, I didn't know what an email was. I was used to testing telephone lines. I still have the first email that was ever sent to me. And the biggest moment that I've had with the school system was the day the employees at Mowgli Street trained me and taught me and told me what directions to go in, but the day I was able to return the favor and help them and answer their questions and solve problems, I just wanted to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. So I am definitely saying thank you to everyone for everything that you've ever done and taught me. I really consider this a huge honor, and wherever I go, I will always, always respect St. Mary's County Public School because it's been my godsend. So thank you, everybody.
And so the board knows, Ellen is retiring July 1st. I don't want her to, but she is. Next, I'd like to recognize April Wathan. April Wathan is a media specialist from George Washington Carver Elementary, and she is our nominee for the Washington Post Teacher of the Year. And if you bear with me, I have a video for her, too.
Ms. April Wathan is extremely deserving of this honor because just genuinely can she is. She is so resourceful. She reminds me of almost like an archaeologist who goes on resource deeds, you know, just to assure that our students have the resources that they need, a lot of teachers. There's never a time that we go to her for anything that she's not willing to assist us with. She's always wanting to learn. So not only does she try to answer the questions that staff and students may have, but she seeks the knowledge herself, and she tries to make sure that they have everything that they need. You know, she researches grant opportunities and all types of contests to assure that any way that she can support meeting their needs for anything, media and technologically related, she does it. And the hours that she devotes to just making sure that everything is done, I can't think of anyone else who is more devoted.
Hi there. I would like to thank my supportive administration, both inside and outside of the building, for supporting my desire to go outside of the box with the media program. And without the support of faculty and staff at Carver, this media program would not flourish. They are welcoming when I want to come into their classroom, and they are happy to meet small groups from their classrooms to try interesting things around the building. Also, I would be remiss if I did not thank Middy Green, my assistant. She's here three days a week, but she works 27 days a week on and off the block, and I appreciate everything she brings to this program.
So with that, I would like to introduce Ms. April Wathan, our Media Specialist, Washington Post Teacher of the Year.
Good morning. Good morning. I don't have a fantastic speech presented today because I had prepared a very quick slide deck to share that I will be able to share at some other point, I understand, but it's not about me, it's about my program. Library media is very important, and it's been a very exciting time. When I went for an interview at Carver two and a half years ago, it was three years ago, actually, Ms. Wood and Ms. Mingo sat down, and we were halfway through the interview, and I told them, I'm not your girl. I'm sorry, I don't have the technology knowledge anymore. I've been out for too long, and I don't think this is a good fit. I left the interview and found myself at Carver a couple months later and have just dug in. I appreciate the support of Regina Greeley. She's been beside me the whole way, and it's priceless. And it's been a wonderful opportunity for the kids and I to grow together. Growth mindset, that's what we're all about. We...I facilitate and have the kids learn right beside me. So I thank you all.
And if one Teacher of the Year wasn't good enough, we have two Teachers of the Year. We also have Allison Sayers, English teacher at Fairlead Academy One. She is our MSDE nominee for Teacher of the Year, and let me just get to her video.
We are so fortunate to have Ms. Sayers at Fairlead Academy teaching our ninth graders in English class. She is an amazing teacher. Whenever I go into her classroom, I am always just so impressed how she's constantly assessing individual students with their work. And at Fairlead, we have students who have struggled in math. She's got them up out of their seats. They are participating in groups, or they are writing independently, and she's giving feedback to those students, and their writing has also come so far. I have learned so much from her about highly effective teaching. I'm just constantly amazed by the things that she does, and I am so grateful that we have her here at Fairlead.
I am extremely honored to be selected as Teacher of the Year for St. Mary's County, and a big part of that is because I am very thankful to be working here in St. Mary's County, and especially at Fairlead Academy. I'm so thankful that my friend and mentor, Sarah Cooper, invited me to come and interview for this position. I'm extremely thankful for my wonderful principal, who hired me and has given me incredible resources to do what I do in my classroom every day. And I'm also very thankful to my wonderful husband and my family, who have supported me along the way. So thank you very much.
So now I'd like to invite Ms. Allison Sayers to the front for her little speech, our Maryland State Department Teacher of the Year.
Good morning, Board of Education members, Mr. Smith, and guests here today. I am Allison Sayers, and I am extremely honored to be with you, named as the Teacher of the Year for St. Mary's County Public Schools. I recognize, however, the grand responsibility that accompanies this award. I stand before you as a representative of the many effective, dedicated, and highly educated professionals who work to make a difference with our students every single day. I recognize that my voice is now theirs. My days are spent with ninth graders at Fairlead Academy, and it is a job that I am blessed to have. Last week, one of my students leapt out of his seat with excitement to hug our academic dean, Mrs. Rebecca Klein, when she shared with him that his reading level score increased six grade levels since August. At the end of the third marking period, another student sought me out before the morning bell to ask me whether or not I would believe that he had never gotten As on his report card before. I told him that this was unbelievable because he is a very capable and successful student. Almost in disbelief, he pulled out his report card, looked at it, and shared that not only did he have his first A, but also his first four. and shared that not only did he have his first A, but also his first 4.0 with As in all of his classes. These experiences this school year and countless others that have come before have further confirmed that it is of extreme importance that our children fall in love with reading. And if they end up not feeling that something special about books, at the very least, our students must be competent readers in order to successfully navigate their worlds in our society. It has also been confirmed to me that most ninth graders arrived at Fairlead Academy with a distaste for reading and are adamant that they will not read, and I cannot make them. So at first, I woo them with spider web chairs, colorful Post-It notes, carpet areas, and beanbag seats. Then slowly but surely, the magic of good stories and powerful discussions win them over. And at this point in the year, I love hearing, "Can we just read all day?" I want you to know that I am able to be your Teacher of the Year because I have been given the resources that help my students to be successful. Due to our smaller classes, I can work one-on-one with each student with his or her instructional need every day. My academic dean, Mrs. Klein, allotted a percentage of our budget to help build a small library of high-interest novels for our students where we didn't have one before. We are able to find a just-right book for almost every student. Mrs. Klein has trusted me when I've said that the only way we can grow strong readers and writers is by having students read and write a lot. At Fairlead, like our library, we are helping students find confidence and success where it hasn't been before. To be a part of this is amazing, and I thank you all for your continued support of our program. The resources, flexibility, trust, and support that I receive at my school is something that we should always consider when looking at teacher effectiveness across the board in all of our schools. And based upon what I know about our current Board of Education and our superintendent, I strongly feel that we teachers have strong advocates in the right positions, such as why it is a great privilege to be named by you as your Teacher of the Year. I sincerely look forward to being able to represent our high-quality school system and our highly effective educators this year. Thank you.
And although she could not be with us today, I would also like to recognize Audrey Ellis, who is our Washington Post Principal of the Year, and I would like to show her video as well.
I've been teaching for many, many years, and I have a ton of experiences in my career. And if I could, I would use Audrey Ellis as a privileged place for a highly effective principal. Audrey is a strong instructional leader. She is a collaborative planner. She is the orchestrator of the community of learners that is our school. And any day of the day, you can find her sitting on the floor with the children, having lunch with parents, sharing ideas with them, or filling in for an unfit sub-job. She's very equipped to take off her Heidi Elsman Toulon sneakers to get a recovery PE class. Audrey has a very grateful personality. She is encouraging with others. She is a leader among the leaders. She is extremely supportive of her teachers, very respectful of our school's parents, and she helps her students. They're very close to her heart. Audrey's a fine principal, and I'm very proud to be her teacher.
I guess I would have to say the best part of my job is the people that I get to work with. I just greet the students every morning, and they're smiling, and they're happy, and they're ready to get to class and learn. During the day, I get to go into the classrooms and watch the teachers find so many innovative ways to help students make connections to their learning and to grow. I just absolutely enjoy that part of the job. I enjoy working with the families and helping them work with us to make that homeschool connection that just really makes the learning stick. My goal as a principal is to create an environment in which everybody's strengths are used. Here at Pine Point, we have such a talented staff. And not only are they talented, but they support one another, they care about each other, and they would help each other to grow and to do what's best for kids. So those are my joys of being a principal, especially here at Pine Point, and I love it. I have an amazing staff, amazing office staff. And I also have a group of colleagues at other schools, other principals, that I work very closely with, that we support each other and help each other to find new ways to make growth within our schools and to continue the improvement that's in each building. Yeah. So I want to thank everybody for their support and for this nomination. It is quite an honor because we have a talented and amazing people. And so I am humbled and feeling very fortunate, and I want to thank everybody for their support. Within my school, and at Centralt, and in other schools, thank you.
So at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Smith over to present the Board of Education resolution to Ms. Johnson, Ms. Sayers, and Ms. Wathan.
First of all, you're all movie stars. I mean, how great is that? And of course, we're gonna, that's gonna go out on the Twitter sphere, the YouTube, and so may your children's children find that 50 years from now and know how exemplary you are now and, of course, will continue to be. You represent so well all of those others who were nominated and all of those who may not have been nominated but do that same level of work. You are a fantastic group. So with that, let me read a resolution. Whereas the staff of St. Mary's County Public Schools takes great pride in delivering exceptional instruction to almost 18,000 students, and whereas teachers, support staff, and administrators all play a vital role in expanding students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams for the future, and whereas teachers keep alive American democracy by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas educators mold students of diverse backgrounds to become productive citizens that will shape the future of our great country, and whereas educational support professionals contribute in various ways to the success of students, teachers, and the community, and whereas administrators work diligently to help students and teachers excel, and their leadership and hard work are essential to the success of our schools and communities, and whereas support staff, teachers, and administrators are exceptionally dedicated and committed to providing high-quality educational opportunities for our students. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the week of May 2nd through the 6th, 2016, as Teacher Appreciation Week, and urges all citizens of St. Mary's County to take time to honor those who helped to make our school system great. And it's signed today by myself and all the members of the board. So on behalf of the board, thank you very much.
And there will be a special recognition event for all of our nominees for the SB TOY and POY Awards, and that will be May 26 at 5 o'clock at Chopticon High School Auditorium. And I would like to thank Mary Ann Williams and her staff for creating the wonderful videos that we were able to look at today. Thank you.
And if you could stay around, we're going to recognize the media specialist. But if you could stay, I'm sure the board would love to have a great picture of you in the middle of the media special, because it's a great time. Thank you so much. Sorry. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning. Excuse me, Board of Education members and Superintendent Smith. We are here today to talk about and share just a quick video about School Library Media Month, which was the month of April. At this time, we would like to recognize the programs that are within our schools that the Library Media Specialists lead as a part of the academic development of all of our students. This year, the theme that was established by the American Association of School Libraries was "School Libraries Transform Learning." And we have heard many times this year, as well as in the past, that the School Library Media Specialists work collaboratively with teachers and students to develop critical thinking, develop self-initiative, which is most important. And April Wathan has received that $10,000 grant for coding, which is a wonderful reflection of that. And as we heard from Ms. Mingo, that our School Library Media Specialists are all archaeologists. The American Association of School Library Standards have now published nine foundational common beliefs, and that is that reading is the window to the world, as we heard with Allison Sayers, that they have developed such a wonderful reading English program in our Fairlead Academy, that inquiry is the framework for learning, which we all know is now the focus of education, that students are not taught, they are taught, they are facilitated to develop their own personal learning strengths, as well as guiding, providing guidance for developing their weaker areas, of which we all have. Ethical behavior is most important, as Mrs. Washington said today. The identity theft, as well as just misuse of the internet that was on the news this morning about college kids. It is extremely important that we develop digital citizens, and our media specialists are very much a part of that. Technology skills, as we know, are absolutely critical to graduating college and career-ready students. Equitable access, which we are all about in the county. We are appreciative of the additional funding that we will get for technology this year from the Board of County Commissioners, but we need to continue to push for that effort. Information literacy, as we know, the focus on inquiry, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and just the fact that we are a global society. We are no longer within our own little community, that learning has a social context, which we know can be handled through Facebook, Twitter, as well as any other collaborative environment. And finally, that school libraries are essential to the development of learning skills. So with those nine tenants, I just want to thank every media specialist in this county who are the archaeologists, who are developing productive citizens, and who will continue to promote achievement and academic gains. So I would like to thank Stacy Hevner, Jen Campbell, Mary Owen, Kate Sullivan, Trish Cole, Mindy Palarani, Fran Brooks, Ashley Dantuano, April Wathan, Stacy Hazuda, Noelle Farrell, Jackie Vibolis, Jessica Deanie, Michelle Smith, Betsy Hundert, Leah Geiger, Wendy Briggs, Rachel Harmon, Joni Cummins, Nicole Allward, Lori DeBolt, Linda Decola, Heather Wiesenkinski, Michelle Lowe, Priscilla Dyson, Amanda O'Neill, Deb Cole, and Brenda Hager. Those are our School Library Media Specialists that deserve great kudos. And I want to end with a video. Well, let us just escape and go out. It was embedded in there.
The more you read, the more things you know.
Oh, doesn't like that.
The more you read, the more things you know. The more you learn, the more pleasure you'll get.
In the library, there's cool places to go, from the book sections to the computer lounge, from the iPads to the television studios. School libraries are transforming learning.
First part of the library is, is when you open a book, you go into a world of just everything. You can do anything in books, anything is possible in books.
The library has always been where I felt books at home. So it's always kind of proved a nice little quiet comfort zone away from this crazy crowdedness hallways at the school.
The library is a place where you can learn things.
And in a world of craziness, of technology, everywhere, libraries are also teach children the importance of dignity and responsibility.
How to like be safe online and how to like find good reliable websites.
Mr. Mort teaches that you shouldn't give out personal information online because you don't, you might not know who you're dealing with.
I would say the technology here has really improved the whole learning environment and learning curriculum, and it's really provided us just some good, different resources to actually benefit us and school.
But the internet and books are not the only things the library offers, but it jumpstarts your career fast.
And in LTV, it's a, it's a, it's a great class. You know, you learn a lot of experience in technology. A lot of the time, you were interviewing people, and you were doing a bunch of different type of journalism things. You're either anchoring, writing script, writing special features, interviewing people. So it's all around, a big journalism thing, and you're getting all the different tastes of things. The library helps me by providing me with the technology, conducting my research. St. Mary's County Public Schools celebrates April at School Library Month. It is a time to celebrate the effects libraries have in our community and school, promoting the importance of reading and the positive activities that libraries provide. From the books to the internet to the television, the library becomes an important part of learning in life because...
Today we're here, tomorrow we're here.
So Board of Education members. Board of Education members, I hope you will extend your willingness to go into the schools, to actually go into the libraries and participate and see what's happening in our wonderful, wonderful libraries across this county. Thank you.
Okay, so now we will take a 10-minute break to take pictures and recognize our guests. We're reconvening, our meeting, um, let's see, public comment. Oh, okay. Oh, I have to read my form. Forgot about this. Sorry. See, it's been so long. Okay. "The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent," down there. "This board will not permit comments criticizing individual staff or students since this is outside the scope of public comment. Please keep in mind that the board also sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot have, we cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented in public. You must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. You are limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. We also encourage you to present written statements to the board secretary, who will distribute copies to all board members." Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Miss Weaver, I brought you another history lesson. It's grabbing my clothes up here. Last week was National Teacher Appreciation Week, and I would like to begin by quoting an unknown source. "God understood our thirst for knowledge and our need to be led by someone wiser. He needed a heart of compassion, of encouragement and patience, someone who would see potential and believe in the best in others, so he made teachers." Political and education leaders first began discussing a day to honor teachers in 1944. In 1953, Eleanor Roosevelt persuaded the 81st Congress to proclaim National Teachers' Day. Finally, in 1980, Congress declared March 7, 19...
Finally, in 1980, Congress declared March 7, 1980, as a day for the nation to recognize teachers. The National Education Association, my parent organization, recognized the first Tuesday in March as National Teacher Day until 1985, when the National PTA established Teacher Appreciation Week as the first full week in May. Then, the governing body of the National Education Association, it's called the Representative Assembly, then voted to recognize the Tuesday of National Teacher Appreciation Week to be National Teacher Day. It has been recognized as an unofficial national holiday ever since. During this week, teachers are showered with flattery, gifts, and free stuff from various businesses, but teachers will tell you that what they really need isn't flattery and free stuff. They want to be respected as experts in their field, that they truly are. They want adequate funding for schools, decent pay, valid assessments, job protection, and a seat at the table in policymaking. All around the country, teacher morale is dropping, and many states are experiencing serious teacher shortages. Corporate school reformers target teachers as the reason why there are low-performing schools, and finance campaigns to destroy teacher autonomy in the classroom. The country doesn't seem to recognize that teachers are the experts in their field and dismiss them when it comes to talking about reform. Can you imagine changes or innovations being initiated in engineering, or medicine, or law without the counsel of engineers, doctors, and lawyers? Of course not. You can flatter teachers and show your appreciation all you want, but if you do not trust them with their own profession, then you do not respect them. We need to stop fixing teachers and create workplaces where they can improve their own profession. If we do this, education will greatly improve, and this will promote lasting change that makes a difference. I would like to close with another unknown quote. But the temple the teacher built shall endure while the ages roll, for that beautiful unseen temple is a child's immortal soul. Thank you. I would also like to take a moment of personal privilege. I started teaching in 1979, and I have been in three other districts before I made my home in Southern Maryland, and the lion's share of my career has been here in Southern Maryland. I have never seen a staff like this. There are not enough superlatives to describe the dedication and the quality of the people who work here. And I would like to also acknowledge that in my current position, I have an opportunity to observe those of us who make the decisions unseen and see how they work. And I have been following very closely the work of the budget, and I want the staff of St. Mary's County to know that from this position, I believe I know your heart, Mr. Smith, and I want to thank you for your dedication and your commitment to the staff of St. Mary's County. Thank you.
Okay, Consent Agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. All right, Mr. Larry Hartwick, a contract award for indefinite quantity contract for commissioning services. I have to say, this is something I have not seen before. Very interesting.
Good morning, Board members.
And very thorough.
Yes. A wonderful day of recognition. I've really enjoyed all the recognitions that have taken place today. This board agenda item is a very important agenda item for us in that commissioning services are one of our most important tools in making sure that our buildings, our facilities are built and renovated to the highest standard. So this is an indefinite quantity contract for commissioning services. In my, in my experience, commissioning services are best performed by an independent firm. A number of firms that actually proposed on this RFP provide both mechanical and commissioning services, but in my experience, you really need that independent party for a number of reasons. They are essentially a quality control process, and the key aspects of it are, they make sure that the design documents, as it specifically relate to building systems, mechanical and electrical systems, are complete, and then in construction, they make sure that the contractor installs it as it was designed and it was intended. Again, going to the independence, during the design process, the commissioning firm provides peer review, and that is really a great asset to have that expertise looking closely at the documents. And then their responsibility in terms of this construction documents, it put together a detailed commissioning plan for the contractor, and it really lays out the overall responsibilities and procedures that will be used during construction to ensure, again, that the equipment is installed correctly. And then during the course of construction, they also make a number of field visits and provide independent field observations. Again, very helpful to have that second or third pair of eyes. So the procedures that they use is they establish for the contractor a startup checklist, make sure that they're following all the manufacturer's recommendations, and then they put together a very robust regime of testing procedures. And then when the equipment is ready, they literally go out and they put the equipment through various simulated actions with the subcontractor to make sure safeties are working correctly, and again, that the equipment is following the sequence of operation as designed. Throughout the process, they provide a log that identifies deficiencies, and they indicate whose responsibility is for corrective actions, and that occurs throughout the job. So we're not waiting to the end of the job to kind of put together a massive list. It's as we go. The other aspect of commissioning services is they're in charge of making sure that the training that we call for in the construction documents is followed through. They basically review the agenda submitted by the contractor, they attend the training sessions, and that training is for both onsite SMCPS staff and maintenance. And then finally, they serve as a resource for us when we go back and look to optimize our operations. And in fact, probably within the next month, the Commissioning Authority will be back at Duke to make sure after a year that the system is fully optimized. In terms of procurement, commissioning services, we consider professional services, so we secure those through a request for proposal, whereby we evaluate both technical qualifications and experience and price. But given the high importance of their expertise and experience, we basically give greater consideration to the technical qualifications and experience. So this particular RFP was advertised in the Maryland Marketplace on March 2, 2016. We received 13 proposals on the due date of March 24, 2016, and as a reminder, this is a one-year term with two one-year renewals. We did receive one proposal late on March 29. That was from Sebastha. We did not open that proposal, and we informed Sebastha that we would not be evaluating and that our recommendation to the board would be to reject their proposal for not being responsive to the due date. They did not contest that finding. Our evaluation committee comprised of Mr. Wood, Mr. Gross, and Mr. Woodlock and myself, all four of us have considerable experience in commissioning services. So the evaluation, out of 13, the unanimous number-one ranked firm from all four of us was complete commissioning. The total score is both the technical and the price proposal together with 100 total points, and you see that it's fairly close, you know, throughout the first four or five, really superb, superb firm. But what we found about complete commissioning that really set them apart is they're a very small firm, with a high level involvement with the principal. Many of the firms were much larger, they had layer upon layer. The advantage of complete commissioning is the principal really does the peer review, he does the, he does the testing regime, he does the commissioning plan, goes out in the field, so he's very, very familiar with the whole process from the very beginning. This particular principal served with a number of engineering firms that specialized in K through 12 facilities prior to starting complete commissioning, and that's very helpful because he's very much aware of the type of equipment that we do install and how we operate our buildings. Complete commissioning was previously awarded to IQC contracts. They've commissioned probably six major projects over that period. They're currently providing the commissioning services at Spring Ridge Middle School. They know our systems, they know our personnel, and they know what we're looking for in our performance standards. The other final thing is that we've really found that the commissioning work reduces warranty issues and really does optimize the energy efficiency of our equipment. It makes no sense to invest in energy efficiency equipment if it's not running correctly. But if you look at our experience, 2008, 2009, another firm commissioned Leonard Town Elementary School and Evergreen Elementary School, and you look at the HVAC work orders in that first year, they were very high. You compare that to complete commissioning work at Greenview Knowles, and most recently at Captain Walter Francis Duke. At Greenview Knowles, for instance, been well over a year, they've only had 16 work orders total, no, I'm sorry, six work orders total, 16 hours of total time. To date, much larger school, more complicated school, Captain Walter Francis Duke has had a, I think, 21 work orders and probably the magnitude of 20 hours. So you compare those two, and you really see the effectiveness of complete commissioning. So our recommendation to you today is kind of in three parts. We're going to ask that you reject the proposal from Sebastha as non-responsive to the due date. We're going to ask that you approve the contract award to complete commissioning services at up to as-needed basis of $50,000 per fiscal year. That's our recommendation. I'd be glad to take your questions.
So since they've worked with us in the past with previously two awarded contracts, and they know our system, but is there any areas where they might not know and need to be brought up to speed, like any of the projects that are currently going on, that they need to get some background information?
I can't really think of any. I think as we go forward in this contract term, we're talking about more systemic kind of work, maybe more individual air handler units, but they are well-versed in that. No, I can't say that I really see them deficient about the knowledge of our system.
Okay. No, I didn't mean like that, I just didn't know if they needed to be brought up to speed with anything that was going on at any particular school, with any...
Well, like I said, they're going to go back to Duke to recommission that, so that'll be a big activity, but that's probably it.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Well, what do they use as a basis for determining their fee for any given project?
They submitted, and I think we provided this as an attachment, they provided hourly rates for specific tasks that are, that are common in commissioning. So if they go out and verify airflow through a register, that's $100 per hour, but that includes travel as well, so it's inclusive of everything, and that's a, so we have maybe eight or nine items related to that.
Thank you.
I just have two quick questions. How, how large is their staff of their, like, complete commission? Like, how many people are available to us to draw from for these projects as needed?
As needed, again, the principal's primarily involved, but there are three other individuals that we could call on if needed.
Okay. And then are there certifications within this type of thing?
Yeah, there is. There's a, there's a national organization for building commissioning and complete commissioning. The principal has that registration.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And as I said before, very complete presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Washington?
I agree, it's very complete, and I like the commissioning because there's an opportunity for independent professional to look at what we are doing and giving us the expertise because we can't know everything about everything, and they can check it to make sure it's adequate, it's complete, and it's installed properly. And then as the projects are proceeding, they can identify deficiencies then, instead of waiting to the end of the project, and then you have to, you discover there are a lot of things that were not done properly. So in the long run, it saves us time, money, and energy, so we're effectively using our resources. So I think this is a very good way to go, and this is a very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
And they have experience working with us in the past. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
Certainly anecdotal, but since you brought the idea of using a commissioning service for especially some of our large, larger projects, and then over time, we were able to, to have complete commissioning come in as compared to the first firm, the workload has decreased, I mean, the number of issues has significantly decreased, and to me, that's, that's working smarter, not harder, and it is a good, a very good investment and protection of, of the resources that we're utilizing to bring about these buildings and these renovations and, and new buildings. So thank you for your due diligence, and especially for bringing this forward because there has been a significant change in, in what's coming forward, and many fewer problems. Thank you.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion for this action item?
I move that the Board of Education reject the proposal from Sebastha as non-responsive to the proposal due date, and further approves the contract award of the indefinite quantity contract for commissioning services to Complete Commissioning Incorporated on an as-needed basis, up to $50,000 per fiscal year throughout the duration of the contract.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Capital Improvement Program, CIP update, Mrs. Kimberly Howell.
Good morning. Before I start, I'd kind of like to echo some things with what Mr. Hartwick just provided. That contract goes out so far in many other areas. For instance, when I track the utility bills on a new school, if I see something that doesn't look like what we anticipated, Mr. Hartwick and I have that commissioning agent that we can go back and review that. So it is very far-reaching, and I appreciate all the effort that he and the committee put into that. When we talk about the CIP, we're, we're kind of in a crossroads right now. We're finishing up FY '17, and we're looking to get that budget funded, but at the same time, my staff and I have already moved on to FY '18, and the next meeting will be before you with the Educational Facilities Master Plan that outlines all of '18. So what we wanted to do was take the time today to talk to you about things that have changed. changed in terms of demographics and where we are and to have a discussion at the end about how we may see some changes in the Educational Facilities Master Plan when it's First of all, I just wanted to talk about what it is that we really want to accomplish. And we have four main goals, which is to meet long-term and, long-term capacity needs. We want to maintain our systemic renovations. We want to meet educational program requirements, ensuring equity for all, and we want to ensure that our schools are safe, secure, efficient, and comfortable. Those are the guiding principles of the capital plan and all of the offices in the Division of Supporting Services collaborate to ensure that we're meeting those goals. In particular, Mr. Hartwick and I have a wonderful relationship as we talk about what we've built and what we're going to build and how we've moved on with that. Mr. Whitten in maintenance is also another key piece to this as well as we look at systemic renovations and lifecycle projects. Sometimes I get asked, what is a CIP project? What does that define? And clearly what it is, it's to address our major construction, major maintenance and improvement projects and to ensure that our facility infrastructure upgrades and replacement are maintained. It's a typical six to ten-year planning for these projects. A project that's in the sixth year will then span out another four or five years. So we're talking about a six to ten-year plan of how we're going to address all of our major components. It's very collaborative. Everybody works as a team and we're trying to ensure that each individual capital project meets the needs of that individual school. And the projects are prioritized based on capital improvement program goals and funding sources. We do have access to federal, state, and local funds. Those project types are quite broad and individual projects will fall into one of the categories of long-term capacity, which is building of our new schools. Short-term capacity, the way we address those short-term needs while we're waiting to build a school with just typically relocatable classrooms. And then our systemics of roof and HVAC, which are major systems. We look at a lifecycle replacement of tennis courts, tracks, sidewalks, paving. And then we look at program enhancements and over time, that's been pre-kindergarten and kindergarten and science lab and will continue to evolve as our educational programs do. And then we look at building renovations. While we're building new, we want to make sure that we're providing equity within our existing facilities and Leonard Town, Meadowland, Spring Ridge are great examples of how we leverage state funding resources to, to modernize our buildings. And then lastly, the sites that we need to accommodate all of the goals that we just To look at this by project type, if we look at this, and this is state and local combined from seventeen to twenty-two FY, we're looking at three hundred and seventy-nine million dollars in funding. And if you look at it, it's very balanced between renovation and systemic renovation at this point in time. And in the middle, we have some capacity and lifecycle that we're looking to approach. I would say this has changed over the last couple of years where we were heavier on capacity, but as our buildings that were built in the nineteen nineties become of age to have lifecycle, you're going to see the renovation and systemic renovation be a big chunk of what we're looking to do. And our funding source, sixty-five percent of that is still coming from the state with thirty-four, thirty-five percent coming from the county. So as we look to the future, we know that this balance needs to be maintained in the projects that we request and we want to make sure that we have state projects that will continue to bring us the resources that we need. If we compare this to the county budget and where we are, this is just local funds. For the FY seventeen to twenty-two budget, which we are currently working on, the school system represents thirty-three percent of that overall budget. The next biggest piece to that is thirty-four percent, which is county highways. So we are getting approximately thirty-three percent or the second largest share of the county's construction budget. And if we look at that in terms of years, if you look at two thousand eleven through two thousand thirteen, that is predominantly where we've been. We've been in that ten million dollar per year range. In fourteen and fifteen, that was accelerated with Spring Ridge Middle School as a result of the fire. And in sixteen, we came back down to that ten million dollar range. And in seventeen, because we're in a year of requesting planning, it's dropped down a little. But what we really want to focus on is that, that staying at that ten million dollars and getting the resources that we do from the state, which on average is around five to eight million dollars. That keeps us in the stream of projects coming through the state. And this is the budget timeline that I talked about. We start in July with the approval of the Educational Facilities Master Plan and it going into effect. And we go through a series of state and local approvals that wind up putting us here in May where we're looking to get the approval of the FY seventeen budget. But at the same time, in May or June, I will present the upcoming budget that takes us all the way back to the beginning, back to the master plan. So at this time of year, we are working on two different budgets. We're coming to close on one and we're beginning another. The process for this really starts in the Division of Supporting Services, having some very serious discussions about what's in the comprehensive maintenance plan. Mr. Whitten and I present those to you, the comprehensive maintenance plan and the state CIP at the same time in the fall for a reason. Those documents are very articulated as to lifecycle replacements and renovations that need to occur. We then go into the master plan where they start to become the planning document for what we're going to execute in the CIP. And then in the fall and through the winter, we talk about the state and local CIP. The important part of this is the master plan as presented and submitted to the state is that planning document that we're going to execute. So it needs to be that we get the Educational Facilities Master Plan straight in the beginning because if we ask for different projects in the fall, we will have some difficulties with the state doing that. We talk about systemic renovation needs. They're going to be one of the primary things that we have to look at over the next couple of years as we're looking at meeting our capacity needs as well. In the next ten years, we have about sixteen projects that need to be done. In eleven to twenty-one years, that jumps to twenty-five. And this is all a result of the projects that we built in the nineteen nineties. The roof and HVAC systems are now coming to fruition for being replaced. So this is something that we are definitely looking at is how we stage all of these projects while we're still building the construction projects that we need for capacity. In terms of sites, we're sitting in a very good place. And I would have told you five or six years ago, that wasn't the case. Right now, we have our elementary, we have our E-Lift property that we just acquired, and we have some existing sites that could still be built on for additions or if we needed to, we could do the, the primary buildings if that was the direction that we wanted to go. At the secondary, we do have some options. The Hayden property in Leonard Town has been identified as a potential for the middle school and a property on St. Andrews Church Road for the high school. So this puts us in a good place as we continue to look forward. We're also looking at sites that we currently have at the secondary level to see if there is any opportunity to move forward if we needed to expand as well. In our current capital projects, we have the elementary school, which has tentatively received FY seventeen planning approval. That will be finalized in the next couple of days with the approval of the governor's budget. And that project as it's currently planned would come online in August of two thousand twenty. When we talk about that, there's a component of redistricting and naming. That's about eighteen months. If this project stays on the track that is, we're about eighteen months to twenty months away from even having discussions about naming or redistricting at this point. At the middle school level, we do not have a school in at the CIP at this time. Our proposal had been to have a high school open later in FY two thousand twenty-one, that we would then start to look at that as a transitional school to address middle school and then high school and we would come back and do a middle school. It's something that we're going to talk about today is the phasing of those projects at this time. We have substantial systemic renovations to address the nineteen ninety, nineteen nineties construction projects. And renovation, we're utilizing state programs to address limited renovations and interior modifications. And Spring Ridge and Leonard Town are wonderful examples of how we've leveraged that funding. And then we utilize grants. We use the Qualified Zone Academy Bond, which is a federal grant. And then we use the Aging School Program, which is a state grant, to address safety and security initiatives. There was an initiative at the state level. We weren't able to do all of the projects we needed to do, but we're coming back now and filling in those projects that weren't with the funding that we can get through As we look at overall enrollment change, if you look at the top, that is the elementary school grades K to five. And as you look out to that over the period of time from FY eleven through FY twenty-six, you'll see that that's where we are experiencing the most growth and will be sustained growth. The state and local are a little different. They're, they're always going to be a little different in terms of the way we model, but we're all on track to say that elementary is where we're going to see some continued growth. To that end, we have a project scheduled, which is our new elementary school in FY two thousand twenty-one coming online. If you look at the second set of numbers, that is our grades nine through twelve. And as you can see, from FY eleven to FY seventeen, we had a small reduction from five thousand students down to forty-nine seventy. So that trend has been to be a little lower. As we look out to two thousand twenty-six, the state is forecasting that we're going to see a period of rapid growth, starting in FY two thousand twenty-one. And at this point in time, school system is below that based on our demographics and the tracking of our students over time, that we realize that we have them in elementary, but that that same percentage does not translate to middle and high school. I had a discussion with the Maryland Department of Planning and their model is based on some very rapid growth that we had at the end of the nineteen nineties and the beginning of the two thousands. And we have agreed to come back and revisit that in the fall once we get our official enrollment to see where we are. In the middle school grades, you can tell that from the period of FY eleven to seventeen, we've been relatively flat. We've seen a little bit of growth, but not a substantial growth as compared to the growth that happened at elementary school level. And if you forward this out to FY twenty-six, you can see that the school system and the state are pretty much in alignment, that we're going to see some moderate growth, but not a tremendous amount of growth overall. When we look at this in terms of enrollment and capacity of where we are, in FY sixteen, we were at the peak of a growth pattern and we brought on Captain Walter Francis Duke. If we come out to FY two thousand twenty-five, we have a third new school that comes on in this alignment. And where we're starting to look is if you really look at those trends, the school system is the blue and black. The blue was our projections last year, the black is our projections this year. So we did lower them some. However, the state is the red line for this year and they are drastically different than us. Based on all of the demographics that we are seeing in my office, we still anticipate that there's going to be growth at the elementary school level and we will continue to monitor that with the state as we move forward. At the middle school level, there's a difference of opinion when we get out to FY two thousand twenty-three. I think that there will be a period of growth and the state acknowledges that from seventeen to twenty-one. The question is how much? They had that on a much more aggressive approach. And then in two thousand twenty-three, they have that line coming down, starting to be a downward trend. Ours is, I think we're going to be where we've been, which is a slow and steady increase. So we will continue to monitor that as well. The important thing to note is that when we get out to FY two thousand twenty-three, that's where we're going to probably start to have some issues with our capacity because as you see, we're starting to get four hundred and so seats overcrowded as an overall system not reflective of individual schools.
Can I ask you a quick, quick question? So for fiscal year eleven through fifteen, the red and the black lines are matched, right?
They are because that's actual enrollment.
I understand. But what is, what were your projections on those years versus what the state projected?
We were probably always a little bit higher than them at middle school level.
Okay.
The trend that you see, with the exception of what's happening in eighteen to twenty-two, which they're really rapidly showing a growth, it's typically in the three to five percent range that we are higher than them at the middle school.
Okay. So for the years where we now have actuals over what your estimates were, then did you change anything in your estimates now going forward based on what the state came in? Do you know what I mean? Like, I mean, if they were looking at something that you weren't and they proved to be right, then did you change your estimates then going forward?
Typically, we are more accurate than the state.
Okay.
So if you look at the blue line, that was our projections for the middle school last year. Based on the enrollment that we've been seeing, you'll see that the black line is our projection for this year. We have slowed that down until we get to FY two thousand twenty-three, which is where we anticipate that there's going to be a bubble coming through and we're going to see an accelerated middle school.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
This is where we really differ between the state and the county. When we start to look at the trends, and it clearly shows it here, we've been in somewhat of a decline and we've, we're projecting that we're going to level off. And this is our line here showing that there will be growth. This is the state's line for this year, the red. When we look at the growth model that they chose, they chose years that the high school and middle schools were growing at a very fast pace. But if you look at a cohort, it says that the future doesn't vary much from the past in most lines. We've not been growing at the high school level. We've been decreasing. The state was willing to entertain a change at this point in time in our projections that they provided to us, but that they would prefer to wait and see what happened in the fall. They're anticipating there's going to be a large high school population increase, but there's nothing that tells us that that's going to change much from the past. So we're going to continue to monitor and have discussions as we go through the fall and look at our projections as they plan again for next year. This red line will come down next year. They, they were ready to make a change now, but wanted to have a little bit more data. Unless there's something that really drastically changes, we will not see a substantial two hundred to three hundred student increase at high school. We have not seen those numbers, so. At the elementary school level, this part is very important to the state. This is their capacity against our enrollment. Everywhere where there are red numbers, those are seats short. And that is what is used to help justify our school construction projects. We do look at adjacent schools and that is what you will find over here. The schools that are in these blocks are the schools that we would be considering for the new elementary school. While we do have seats in some of the other schools, they're, they're twenty-nine, they're thirty, they're, they're sixty seats. Not enough to make a substantial change if we redistricted the entire county at this point. We still would not have the capacity we need overall. When we get to FY two thousand twenty-one, we're three hundred and thirty-five seats short. That takes into account all the positives and the negatives, but at that period of time, if you look, Evergreen is a hundred and twenty-one seats short, George Washington Carver is seventy-nine, Lexington Park is a hundred and seventy-four, Park Hall is a hundred and nine, and Ridge is forty-five. So we clearly have a pocket of schools in the, the center, lower central to southern portion of the county that need assistance. When we get out to two thousand twenty-six, those numbers go to a hundred and fifty-five, ninety-eight, one ninety-eight, one thirty, and fifty-three. So this is the time period that we would be looking at that new elementary school and how it phases in. Using that same model, when we look at the secondary, if we look at where we're at overall in the middle school in two thousand twenty-two, we're a hundred and seventy seats, a hundred and seventy-seven seats short. What this does not reflect is that once the project is completed at Spring Ridge Middle School, they will have additional capacity, but that doesn't get calculated until the end of the project. So we're just going to start that process now. What we do know is that Leonard Town and Margaret Brent, by the time we get out to two thousand twenty-six, will be ninety-five and a hundred and ten. So in the central portion of the county, we will need additional capacity. We've been talking about a seven hundred capacity middle school. Clearly, if we know that the state has a model that we have to have fifty percent in place when we ask for planning approval and the remainder of it ready by the time we open construction, as we can see, we're just now in this two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, having the discussions about planning approval. What we don't know is there's not a growth rate there fast enough to say that when we're going to get to seven hundred. Seven hundred could take ten to fifteen years. So we have to consider what we're going to do at the middle school. At the same process, we look at the high school. We've been talking about a twelve hundred capacity high school. That means we have to have six hundred students in place and five years later, we have to have twelve hundred. We just now in FY two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, start to get to the point where we have half of the students. But again, if you look at that rate of growth that we're seeing, to get to twelve hundred, we could be talking fifteen years before we would have that capacity. So we're looking at what we can do at middle school and high school, knowing that new schools are probably not in the, in the ten-year timeframe. So some of the future changes that we'd like to discuss with you today, at the elementary school level, we're considering the timing on the next school based on the enrollment and state capacity approval process. We have planning approval for it now. Those numbers indicate that it may be there, but we may have a one, one-year consideration on moving that out if we don't get to September and have the numbers that we think we do. The current state recommendation for that school is based on our enrollment need, is only four hundred and ninety-one out of the six hundred and ninety-nine seats, or six hundred and ninety seats that we're proposing for that project. So we have to get closer to that number before they will grant the full project funding. With that, we're going to consider the options that are available for future projects. We have the primary buildings that we've discussed and we can do that at several facilities. But we're having serious discussions about expansion of existing schools because if we go back and, sorry, going the wrong way. If we go back and look, we also have Hollywood, Leonard Town, but most importantly, we have Letty Dent. When we get out to the, the ten-year timeframe, Letty Dent is at a hundred and fifteen and Mechanicsville is at ninety-seven. So we know that we're going to need capacity at the north end of the county at some point. And what we're looking at is the opportunity to expand our facilities in the north and what do we have that we can work with and timing of how we would do that with Letty Marshall Dent potentially because we also have the parking lot expansion to do. because we also have the parking lot expansion to do. So there's some way we could bundle projects together. At the middle school level, we are considering capacity options and how a transitional school would work, whether it be the middle school going in as a high school. But most importantly, what can we do, knowing that we're going to have around 500 to 600 seats that need to be filled at some point in time, but we don't have the ability to ask for those projects for a 700-capacity facility now? So we're looking at what options we have. At the high school level, we're considering the isolated capacity needs at Leonard Town High School. That is predominantly where the growth is happening. We're considering how Fairlead Academy and the Forest Center can assist with meeting those capacity needs, and considering options for new construction. Do we wait and build a new school, or do we build an addition? Or do we build a smaller school somewhere else that meets programmatic needs as well? So we have a lot of things that are on the table. What I can share with you is that when we come in with the Educational Facilities Master Plan, we will come in with some component of a change for the middle school and high school. And we'll look at the timing, the elementary, to try and address the needs that we have at isolated schools without the ability from the state level at this point to secure a new middle school and a new high school. So at this point, what I would like to do is open that up for discussion.
If you added one to a school that you already have, you know, because then you wouldn't have to look for a new site, etc., does the state help with the funding for those projects then?
Yes, they would. They would fund at their normal level. And where we, right now, would not qualify for, say, a new high school, if we were to do an addition, and we can justify that with enrollment, they will participate in that project.
I will tell you, and this is looking at your maintenance, where you were talking about the HVAC and the roof and things like that. I've looked at how some of the other systems work, school systems work in the state. And I will tell you that you and Mr. Hartwick have done an excellent job maintaining everything and keeping it in excellent order, so that, you know, it doesn't fall so far behind that, you know, now we're having to look for whole new systems. And, you know, you've maintained things fairly well. Or I'd say, not just fairly well, but very well, and look to the future.
I appreciate those comments. The commissioning contract that was done, that's a big portion of it. If we address issues before we take occupancy of the building, that helps us along the way very much. There's a huge collaboration at the Division of Supporting Services between Mr. Whitten and Maintenance, Mr. Hartwick and myself, to ensure that we get the most bang for our buck when we build it, and the most out of the life of the project that we can. We are constantly collaborating. If something doesn't seem right on an invoice for a SMECO bill, I'm right down asking the two of them, is there something going on? Is there something we need to be looking at? And a lot of that times, that also troubleshoots issues as well. We do get a lot out of our systems, and we do take them to the point where we've talked about this many times. We manufacture parts, we do other things to keep those systems running as long as we can before we have to replace them.
Well, thank you so much for doing that, because, like I said, I have looked at other school systems in the state just to get an idea of kind of what they're doing. And, you know, they definitely do not maintain their buildings like you all do.
I appreciate that, thank you.
On planning and such, will the fact that, at least at the high school level, that the state is more aggressive in their projections mean that the planning will be accelerated? Or did they base it on the census in September?
Okay, so what would happen is if we were to go in with a project in the fall, they look at the first five years of our projections, because we do a 10-year projection. They use the first five as the method for planning approval. So if we're going to go in for a project, we have to show and demonstrate in the five-year timeframe from that approval that there's going to be the 50% at the time of construction, and that upon occupancy, we would have the numbers that we need to have. What they use their 10-year is for long-term planning. So in our six-year, if we have a high school in, they're going to be looking at those 10-year projections, saying, yes, this looks viable. The project should stay in the CIP and keep moving forward. If something didn't look like it was going to be able to be funded, then we would have a discussion about the timing of those projects. Maryland Department of Planning sits at the table. They are one of the approvals, so their numbers are very important to justify ours. If you look at the five-year projections, we're very close. It's the 10-year, it's the last five, where we have a difference of opinion of what's going to occur.
That 50% figure really hurts the small counties. You know, it's easier to hide 50% in 10 high schools than it is in three high schools. You know, we end up with overcrowding. And then we're talking about adding on to existing. Now, do you think that the county would be willing to give us some of the property that's part of the park behind Dent, if we were to expand?
It's all been developed. They just put in football and soccer, and, I mean, it's all.
So we might end up with a rather small footprint.
We actually have more land than I think most realize at Dent. There's a lot of it that's wooded that we do own. It would require some clearing of land. But that, with the property that we bought upfront from the molar, would allow us to reshift some of the parking areas to the front and consolidate, and make the parking what it needs to be with separate parent drop-off. And then that frees up that one side of the building. And there's also, if you're facing the building, that would be the right. And if you're facing the building on the left, we own a considerable amount of property that we could expand on.
Thank you.
Going back to the estimates for the high school, like your estimates versus the state estimates, what is the big varying factor on that? Like, what are they including that we just don't see that comes to fruition?
Go back to that chart. The big variance on this is, when they projected, we do a three-year cohort. So we look at the last three years, because that's the past, that's what we're experiencing right now. So we used a three-year cohort model, and we used the last three years. And that's why you're getting this leveling off. You're getting some growth, because we've started to see a little bit, and you're seeing it slowly come up. The growth that they chose, their model, was from 10 years ago. So they picked three years from 10 years ago, when we had growth. Their thinking on that was, we are in a very prosperous county that has great work and income, and we're going to be one of the desirable places to live. I agree with that. But historically, we do not carry over that same rate of growth from elementary to middle and high school. It is much less. So this is banking on years when we had a significant amount of growth. They've seen it in the past, but we have not experienced it. If you look back from, for the last five, if you go back to 11 to 16, we have not seen a tremendous amount of growth that would warrant this type of a growth.
Okay, the irony is killing me right now. But the, one other question. So for the, for, okay. So if our, do you place more credence in the state? Okay, let me rephrase this. All right, so we've opened two elementary schools since, what, 2011? Okay, so are those students and those families far enough along in their school careers to change that trajectory? I know you said that the students don't necessarily transfer from elementary to middle to high school. But I've got, you know, I have a major development right here behind, right? That where Duke is, and now I have another, what, 300 houses that are going in on Hollywood Road. So is there anything that you see with the students that have already moved into those two elementary schools that would challenge the fact that we might have elementary students that actually moved from middle to high school within the county and not leave?
I think if you look at this chart, this is a great way, and this is why I actually created this chart at one point. If you look at the trajectory of elementary over the last five years, that has been there. It's been steady, it's been increasing. But at the same time that those homes were opening and families were moving in, high school was declining. And middle school was relatively flat. What I'm seeing is this, if you start in 14 and 16, you start to see this trend upward. That's where we're starting to take that, and we're looking out and saying that that trend should continue on. But it's at the rate of growth that it was. There isn't anything that's happened in the county that I think will change this dynamic drastically over the next five to 10 years. I think we'll see a slow and steady rate increase. If you look at this trend starting to increase, once it starts to increase at the middle school, then it will start to increase at the high school. But unless something drastically changes, and we get 200 or 300 high school students this year, then that trend, that line won't go higher.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that, you know, if, with the new developments that are coming in, and the number of people that are coming in, if there's anything that we've seen so far where the school-aged children, meaning the elementary school-aged children, continue on. And I know it's too early, because the schools haven't opened that long. But if you're taking that into account in those charts, then.
Right, when we look at what's happened, you know, Wildwood had a very large period of growth. Leonard's Grant had a very large period of growth. And during all of that growth, the middle school and the high school, the high school continued to decline during all of that. And the middle school had a almost flat rate of growth during that period of construction. Now, we'll continue to monitor. That's the beauty of doing a annual plan every year. It gives you the opportunity to take and move something out. And we've done this throughout the time. Those have been on the board. Now, we've had a high school in, it's been out, it's moved back in, and we'll continue to monitor. But that is the beauty of doing this every year.
Okay, and then my very last question is, so if, and you're talking about moving the schools out. So if we still have like a bucket, so to speak, of cash in a year for CIP, then is there the opportunity to move other projects in, mainly to Mrs. Weaver's point about, you know, maintenance of the schools? And I know, you know, Mr. Whitten's been up there several times on the HVAC systems at some of the older schools. So rather than waiting for some catastrophic loss, would we then have the opportunity to move those projects, you know, in an earlier fiscal year?
That was my comment on this slide. I want to make sure that we're maintaining state funds, because what happens is the state gets allocated a certain amount of money. And that's been 250 million a year. Of that, St. Mary's has been $5 to $8 million. What happens when we go in for a CIP project, like the elementary school that we got planning approval for? They're already projecting within their budget that in two years, and the second, third, and fourth year of it, that we're going to be asking for those $5 to $7 million. If we don't utilize that, and we ask for no state projects, that funding will go to another county. They have a cash flow process. What would happen is, we wouldn't be able to get another project, a large one like that, for four or five years, potentially unless another county gave theirs up. So what we want to do is, we want to maintain a constant $5 to $8 million. So what I'll look at now is our systemics.
Okay.
Because we have this large list of systemics that we can, in 11 and 21, we have the opportunity to possibly move some of those up and look at some of the other components that we may not have had the opportunity to do if we kept everything on track the way we are.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And again, if we need to, we can change things as the years progress, but we can maximize our funding right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you mentioned adding on to schools. What challenges does that bring to the infrastructure of the school that was, you know, built for a certain number of students?
When we look at doing on an addition, what we would have to do is, we have to look at the core spaces. We're going to look at the gymnasium, we're going to look at the cafeteria. We're going to look at the media center, all of those pieces. And those might have to be expanded as well, or addressed in another way. What we have, when we did the 1990s, we took all of our small buildings and we made them larger and we added on to those capacities. We have a couple of schools now that still have that possibility, but they're getting very small, because we did maximize those opportunities. I think Letty Dent is probably the last one we would really have that opportunity to do at the elementary school, to expand it, and look at what options are in the northern end of the county, of how we utilize our facilities, and how we utilize that capacity.
Thank you.
At one time, our enrollment projections could only be off of the state's by, I believe it was 5%.
5% overall.
And so, does that continue?
It does. And the way that that is occurring right now, because we are off significantly from them at the high school level, what happens is, because the elementary school is so close, and the middle school are so close in the first couple of years, we are overall 5% off, and that we're right above them 5% overall.
So it's an aggregate, it's not?
It's not by grade level, it's the entire school system. So we can have deviation at elementary, middle, and high, but as long as the overall number is at 5%. And we are. It's just we have differences of opinion of how that's going to occur.
Okay. The planning approval that we have for the third new elementary school, as you mentioned, they have programmed that, the construction, the state has programmed the construction of that school into their budget in several years. And it's important that we stay in that timeline. So can we stretch the planning approval by a little bit, if we needed to?
We're given three years on planning approval. Right now, we're at a planning for two, but we could theoretically go to three. If we go beyond three, we don't automatically lose it. But what would have to happen is discussions with the superintendent, and Dr. Walker, and myself with the state, to say, if we get into year four, if that was how far we had to take it, we're ready to ask for construction at that point, but we'd like to defer it. So it's not an automatic, you lose it at the end of three, but it becomes a discussion point with the state. At this point, I don't see us moving it out that far. I think, given the numbers where we are, looking at maybe a year to make sure that we have it. The important piece is, when we go in and ask for construction funding, we lock in. So if we only have justification, say, for 525, that's what they would pay on. They wouldn't pay on the full project, they would only pay for the share that we could come in and say we have at this time. So it's really important that we time that construction approval when we know that we're going to get the maximum for that project.
Okay. And lastly, I mean, the idea of doing an addition as compared to a primary school certainly has, to me, some value in terms of utilization of staffing. Not needing to have another media specialist, not needing to have another nurse there, some of those. Right, and so I'm going to be really interested to hear the possibilities and to determine what makes the most sense in terms of going forward, so.
I appreciate that comment. That is, one of the things that we look at is how, we are very cognizant of when a new building opens, the impact that has on the operating side. So we're looking at all the options to see how we can make this the most fiscally responsible on both the operating and the capital side.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. That's all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now it's all about money. Ms. McCord?
She's sitting in the back with those 3,000 lines of code.
I told her she should sit in the back and work.
Good call.
So the great news is that, in the month of April, we received the final county allocation. So we received 100% of the allocation from the county for a fiscal 2016. Year-to-date, we've received 92.41% of the appropriations, with a balance of $15.3 million. On the expenditure side, we still have the same areas of concern that is in special education and health services. Our bottom line, we're sitting at 97.18% of our budget either spent or committed. The encumbrances outstanding currently are at $47.6 million, and that does include our salary encumbrances. There are a couple of items I'd like to point out, and that is, our health insurance account is currently sitting with a budgetary savings on the books of $1.7 million. However, our healthcare provider has notified us that we are in a deficit posture on their books of $1.6 million. So once we accrue that and get that bill, that will wipe out the entire budgetary savings. We do have 46 positions that submitted, 46 staff members that submitted a request for the, submitted their retirement paperwork, and will be receiving the retirement incentive, and that will be paid out in the month of May. So you'll also, the May report will reflect those costs. And that, in addition to their annual leave payout, is expected to be about $600,000. We have performed some year-end projections. So currently, although our budget balance stands at $5.6 million, we're looking at that number to be closer to $1.4 million. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Weaver?
No, no questions.
When do you expect the Department of Defense money to come in?
That's usually late in the fiscal year. I'll go back and look exactly when that was received last year.
And the other thing is, during the year, they normally have a reconciliation of prior fiscal years. And I didn't see any money coming in on those prior year reconciliations.
We've already received the prior year reconciliations for the Impact Aid, and that's what drove that number up in the past month. But we have not received that information yet for the DOD monies.
Thank you.
I have no questions, Mrs. Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Stone?
No questions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, the next board meeting will be Wednesday, May 25th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m., one short week prior to graduation season, correct?
Busy time, busy time.
Exactly, so we are adjourning, but we will resume our executive session.